Order. We have an agenda before us. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda. And cue in a second. Thank you, Mr. Brad, for the second. Are there any changes? I know, I understand that the P under old business should be postponed till the January meeting. I would also have A under old business. I reached out for D that, but I have not been back home yet. So I propose that both A and B under old business be postponed till the January meeting. And then, under new business, C should be just a post office update. And actually, we should probably eliminate all that together, because I'll talk about that in the mayor's report. I'm trying to get us out of here, it's still cold. So, that would be my proposed amendments to take out under old business A, B, and under new business C.
I don't think I want to make that decision.
Okay. I'll make sure. So, is that all right with you, since you made the motion?
It is.
Are they all right with you, Brad, since you made the second?
Yes.
All right. We have amended agenda. Those, are there any other additions or deletions? If not, roll call vote to approve the agenda. Gene?
Uh, fine. Yes.
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 All right. We, just as a quick note to everyone here, our town clerk administrator, like so many others, has fallen prey to the flu, and so she's not here tonight. And so Jean is, Jean Godine, your guys, is generously working on her stead as the reporter of amendments for this meeting, so thank you for that.
So I found a little slow response, I guess, because I haven't been writing.
We have in front of us the minutes for the November 14 meeting. Motion to approve the minutes.
I approve.
All right, thank you. A second?
Second.
All right. Are there any changes?
I've got one. I think under the planning commission updates, that should just override the pass tense. We had had that walk through town Sunday prior.
Okay.
Reads like it's upcoming.
Second is, there were, on page five, I closed the public comments to the public forum or the public comments at 8:02. I did not re-close them at 8:10. So, that final line on page five of the minutes should be deleted. Jean, are you all right with those changes to the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Then roll call vote to approve the amended minutes. Jean?
Yes.
Out of steam, that is not present.
Yes.
Yes?
Out of steam.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Minutes are approved. The mayor's report. We had a wonderful event last night, and Jean Godine, I need to thank you especially for all your work coordinating last night. It was a wonderful event. The flu and COVID probably kept our numbers down a little bit, but you were flexible. We were able to go to a different location. I want to thank the Washington School for being able to accommodate us. But Jean, thank you so much for all that you did there. I want to thank Brad Schneider, and Joe Whitehead, and Laura Dodd, and the Inn for all they did to help make that a success.
And Drew Beard.
And Drew Beard.
The all for the work.
And actually, I have Kuma, so.
Yeah. So, thank you to that. Preceding that was a wonderful event on December 4th, and they, it was nice to have a parade back in the town of Little Washington again. And I want to thank Janet Davidson, and Tony Trivio for all the work that they did. I especially want to thank Kim Nelson. I know she did an awful lot of work. And an extra special thank you to Drew Mitchell for offering Avon Hall. I know his vision was that Avon Hall would be a community space, and it worked out perfectly in that way. So thank you, Drew, for that. Let me just also thank Dennis Brack, Anita Garchel, Katie Cole, Phil Tan, Candy Kidd, Dot, and Rick Lassard. Dot, God bless her, she's been doing this for millennia. Bob Trastan and Danny Wilson for all their work to make this year a successful re-emergence of the parade. It was a wonderful event. Finally, this is my last meeting is, or finally for my comments and a couple of other things coming up after this, I want to give some gratitude to a number of people who've made it very worthwhile for the last four years. First, I'd like to thank Patrick and especially the Inn for their contributions and their presence in the town. Patrick, I know you've had to put up with a lot of guff from the town, and you've been very gracious about it. And we have enjoyed having a relationship with the Inn and are proud to have the Inn as part of our community. And we'll take you as part of that as well. And Jean Godine, thank you for the brochure which you're going to talk about. Thank you for your sensible take on things. Thank you for the holiday party. To Joe Whitehead, thank you for your intelligent analysis and rolling up the sleeves to approach problems. And I will still be on council, so you and I will still be doing the decorating of the signs every year. Brad Schneider, I want to thank you for your expertise and your time. We would be woefully in the woods and lost if not for you. So we are grateful for you.
Thank you.
Drew, I want to thank you for your assistance and for your role as the PC liaison. You're a wonderful addition to the council, and I'm so glad to have you. Steve Garson, and Martin Cram, and John Gardberg, who's not here, I want to thank you for the high level of expertise and professionalism that you've brought to your positions here in the town. We are grateful to have you, and we have certainly benefited from your good counsel. And last, but not least, to the other two of the three amigos, which are Gail Swift and Barbara Batson. Sorry Barbara is not here tonight, but she has done an extraordinary amount of work on behalf of the town over the last three and a half years, and I have been certainly the beneficiary that, and also Gail Swift, who has pulled my, pulled me out of the fire many times, and has been able to help, even while I'm working full-time, she has been able to help on things. So Gail, I'd give you a hug, but I'm not going to get close to you. But I want to thank you so much for all that you've done. Getting back to business, there were two things that were mentioned in the minutes which are not going to be brought up, as I understand of this meeting. The first is the tap fees, which will be delayed until the January meeting. I want to hear about that. And the other was the solar panels, which will also be brought up. An ordinance for the solar panels, and that will also be deferred to the January meeting. And then the second thing that I wanted to bring up, and I wanted to let her have a moment in the spotlight, is Jean Godine for this wonderful brochure that she helped Washington through.
Yeah, well, we finally have it in print after a long travail, but thanks to all of the group who worked on it. Nancy Button was instrumental in providing the history of various houses and places in this town, and also doing layout. And then Laura Dodd also was very helpful, and in fact, did the map. So if you haven't seen this, pick them up. They're on the foyer, on the table there, and there is a map of properties in the town, and also, not only information about the businesses, which gives the email addresses and the days of the week that they're open, and of course, their street addresses, but also the historical nature of the other buildings. So it isn't just the businesses, it's also the town as a whole. So I'd encourage you to look at it and enjoy it. At the party yesterday, a number of people came up to me and were trying to ask about, what's that building, big white building? And I was saying, well, let's get one of these out, and we'll look at the map and see which one it is. Please, they're, you know, they'll be available at the post office, at the visitor's center, and also at various bed and breakfasts and businesses in the town. So I hope you enjoy it.
And our next step is to also do a more indexed web version. We're looking forward to that. That's our next step in the process. So thank you very much for your leadership.
Great, Jean, thanks, Jean. Turned out great.
That ends my report.
The post office?
The...
Yeah, we're taking the landscaping off.
Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
As the entrance to post office is a ground-laid enclosure structure, or whatever you want to call it, for the inner cable goes back to the treatment plant, and that has been knocked over, run over several times. When I see it, I put the cover back on. So I think we need to either put a post in there, or a big 2,000-pound boulder, or something to prevent people from hitting it.
Okay.
So.
Is this, is this right where you first turned in, right now that it's common?
Well, you first turn, yeah, it's a sort of grayish plastic enclosure. And it was standing straight up, now it's going to tilt it, but you got the cover back on it. The rest of the landscaping is beautiful, but I think we need to do something right there, because somebody's coming in.
I'll make a phone call with the water.
Great.
We've got, that reminds me, I feel remiss that I had a report and I didn't even talk about the post office. But I talked with the postmaster on Saturday, and according to him, in a discussion we had with the owner, they were supposed to be coming in again. They'd come in last Thursday, but they had a problem with the lights, they're going to come back, I understand, this Thursday to install them. And also, the kiosk should be done in the very near future. I have, I put Miss Swift, our resident guard dog, or tack dog, to provide a nudge to the contractor who graciously said they could get it done, and they will also get this boulder done. That is an extended mayor's report. I apologize for his length. Mr. Crem, I expect you to be more succinct than I was.
Thank you, sir. Well, you made the job easier, because you covered two of the points that I had on my floor. So the only two points I have left remaining, the legged lane mode maintenance agreement, had a good discussion, council invited about that, and I just yesterday got a revised set of documents from John Foot, which I had a chance to review, and I'll be able to give you comments on that. So that's, the next thing I think would be for me to comment to the town council about that, and speak to them, input, and resolve a couple of issues. One, the big issue that I see is that we don't have the coring, core samples yet of the pavement that are being taken to see what the current status of that, current condition that road is. And Mr. Foot would draft it, he agreed in such fashion that if it's substandard, that the town would take necessary steps to bring it up to the standards that it was supposed to be built to in the first place. And I don't know that that's something that the town council wants to take on, and we don't have to answer that question now, but I want to flag that as something that jumped out at me there. Second issue I wanted to bring to your attention is the path license. Racing Engineering did the exhibits for the county, and they have quoted a price of $1,000 to do an exhibit for the path license across the county property. They said they would take 24 days to do that work. So if the council can authorize that, then I can let them get started on that work.
I talked to the clerk who was comfortable with whatever we would submit to her.
Okay.
So is this something that's necessary for the county, or is it something that's necessary for the clerk?
This is going to be necessary for the county. The county has said that they would not accept a less formal exhibit. They want something directed by an engineer with a seal and everything.
All right. Then we will go ahead and, go ahead and, I will authorize that to the clerk.
Can I ask a question? Have we resolved whatever language we're going to put together for the, regarding the water meters for Rush River?
So, I'm going to defer that question to Mr. Garson. I'm satisfied that if we put them where the applicants requested, that we can have appropriate language to make sure that we have access to, including crossing other property of the applicant. But I think that's part of the larger issue that Mr. Garson's addressing in the report.
Okay. Well, key was our responsibility between the main and the meter itself.
Right.
So.
I think we can resolve whatever time, it's not something we can resolve this evening.
Okay.
Information on the site plan, or where are what these, you guys, so that the county can access the meters.
Okay. I'm good with that.
All right. So, finish up, Mr. Crem. Sounds like legged lane, we should not necessarily assume that that would be on the January agenda, the meeting ended up being a little bit later than January.
No, I'm hopeful to have it on January.
Okay. And we will make sure it gets on that one. All right, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Mr. Garson, do you mind going to the microphone?
No, not at all. Where I can speak louder. We've got my report in front of you. It's really fairly simple. I think the big things to point out is the land and surface permit has been issued for Rush River, and the permit for the retained wall has been issued. The other thing that's, I think, stands out on the report is that we've gotten an application from the Inn of Little Washington for the renovations and improvements to Cook's Cottage for additional guest lodging, and that will be going through the ARB and site planning process. Other than that, from the administrative side, the new applications, and I call them new applications, are all in place once Barbara finds a few moments to get them on the website. We'll be using those, but if you want paper copies, give to your neighbor who's starting a project, feel free to hand them a paper copy. Hopefully, the new applications will make it a little easier to file and get the information to the different boards and commissions as we progress through the application. Other than that, there's my report.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions from council members, from Mr. Garson? Thank you. Public Works Committee.
Meters are in, these are working quite well. I had a conversation with Cody this morning, because we were talking about a fall and shrink system. I didn't realize the screen at the top of the water tower is simply, they did that some time back. So we're going to forego anything on that fall and shrink until we have some other work to do on that water tower. Switches in, we're still working on an alternative way of monitoring the amount of water in the tower. There's a bad switch that keeps going out, the foam lines, we're trying to work around that. The other thing that has come up, kind of just started out this afternoon, before a meeting, with our system, because we can now monitor much more accurately the water flows, it appears we do have a leak in the system somewhere. Barbara's going to have to do a tracking at her end from all our customers, and then we'll get how much we're pumping. It appears there's potentially a leak, 30 gallons per minute leak in the system, so we're going to have to figure out where it is. So that just came in this evening, I had to talk to Cody, I'm trying to get some more of a feel for what that is. I don't think it's going to, it's not impacting, you know, availability of water or anything like that, but it is simply something that's just, unfortunately, with our new technology, it's easier to identify this. I'm still working on the possibility of EV charging stations at post office, including sort of hit and miss with some of the suppliers, and hoping that, between now and the end of the year, I don't know if anybody has, so after the new year, really pick up on that. And then, just in general, our waste water plant is running pretty well right now. So our focus for the rest of the fiscal year, and then probably for next one's year, is putting attention to the water system. We definitely need to have some work in, we've got to get quotes on some new equipment, because there's equipment that's just aging out. So going forward, the focus would be on the water system. We'll deal with anything practical for the wastewater. Again, that plant's in pretty good shape, so let's see the water system under control, and then we'll go back and we'll have upgrades and improvements to the wastewater, and we'll see if you're coming after that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Drew, do you want to speak?
I can, I can, I can. Sorry, there is some updating.
Architectural Review Board.
Hello, Drew Mitchell, chairman of the Architectural Review Board. In early November, we had a meeting pretty straightforward. We had three applications, which were all approved, a sign, a fence, and a covering over, and an entryway. Then we didn't have any applications for later in November during our normally scheduled meeting. This month, we have one application, and that's, so we'll meet on that next Monday. And then you have the description of the special meeting in early November printed out. It's pretty lengthy, so I'll get that adjusted on your own. But before I conclude, Fred, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to say thank you so much. I joined the ARB, I guess it was about roughly a year to two years ago, somewhere in there. Time flies. And I was the youngest member, and within a very short period, I became the most tenured member. So, in any case, you helped me adjust to that gracefully, and it was drinking from a fire hose, and you're an excellent teacher, obviously, and I just really wanted to appreciate the council handling it at times, and just wanted to say thank you. So.
All right. The next thing we have is Rush River Site Plan, and possible action on that. Mr. Garson, do you have any introductory comments before we go on this?
I've got in front of you the status report, and it's rather boring, but it's a factual status report of the Rush River. I'll be happy to read it, too, but I think you can read it yourself. And with some recommendations at the end, that's on page two, for the faculty.
Would I actually be accurate to say the status version is, in the time since our last meeting, we've resolved all the outstanding issues or come with education, we're going to call them outstanding?
I think so.
Then we have before us, according to page two, it appears that we have two motions. One is to accept your report, and second, more importantly, is approve the site plan for Rush River Commons. I will go ahead, even though this is out there, I'll go ahead and read the whole thing. Approve the site plan for Rush River Commons, based on dated December 8, 2023, signed by Hrna Pasha Sheik, and to authorize zoning administrators to allow any minor revisions to the approved site plan necessary for good engineering practices and consistent with applicable laws and ordinances to authorize utility easement class to share on the site plan to approve of the site plan is contingent upon recordation of a conservation easement, generally consistent with the draft deed of gift of easement proposed by the applicant and the location noted on the site plan, to authorize zoning approval of building permits and third-party inspection agreements that are in accordance with the site plan. All right, is there, let's deal with the second motion first. Is there a motion to approve?
I approve, I have one through five included in the zoning administration report.
Right. There's a second. Any discussion? Don't we want to add some more drama to this?
No.
If not, then I'll have roll call vote to approve the motion. Jean?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Before we go further, let me once again thank Mr. Higbee and the foundation for all this work that they're doing, will have a profound impact in a positive way to the town and to the greater community. So we are grateful, and thank you very much.
Always thank you for your cooperation.
The second motion would be to accept the zoning administrator's report.
I support.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm confused. I thought the first motion was...
The first motion was to do the...
One through five.
One through five. And then there's a motion above that to accept the zoning administrator's report.
We did that on purpose, change it.
So, roll call vote to Jean?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you very much. That is done.
I'm sorry, I missed two.
I'm leaving. Any else?
On both. All right. I thought we would have an open briefing of the CILW, the Christmas in Little Washington Parade, and the Town Holiday Park. I want to again thank you, the Washington School, for making it able to accommodate our last-minute change to allow more space so that people could feel safer to attend the event. And again, I want to thank the people who are so involved, Janet and Tony, for the parade, which was extraordinary. Are any thoughts from other council members, any things that we need to change?
I think we can do that with the following.
Got it. All right. Then we will go ahead and end that, and we will go ahead and open it up.
I just want to make one comment, because I used to see a lot of people back in town getting it.
That's great.
And food was delicious, as always, at both events. I will go ahead and now open up to a public forum, and if you wish to speak, please go to the microphone and speak, and identify yourself by name, and if you are a resident of the town or not.
My name is Judy Tesarino, I am a resident of the town on Caris Hollow. I have two comments, and the planning commission didn't do a report today, I thought they were going to. So let me say first on that subject, my mother never swore. If... If, she had three things she would say, sometimes because she was happy and it was a happy swear and then other times when she was a hella. They were health bells, ye gods, and little fishes, and that was bas-ackward. So the bas-ackward part kind of applies, Cooper was on the paper this week, this past week, on paths and sidewalks. And it seemed bas-ackward because there hadn't been any kind of public notice that there was going to be a discussion anywhere about it. And my phone, as vice chair of the planning commission, although I don't think that's what I was called, I think I was called because I'm a nudge, the wires were hot, so were Caroline and Estes, I've talked to Joe, I've talked to a number of you, and I'm just saying, it wasn't the best way to introduce that discussion. To quote my mother, it was bas-ackward. My other is about the parade and Christmas in Little Washington, which is C-I-L-W, there's no O in there. Anyway, this year, there was no one from the town really active on that committee. I was out there, as my friend here, Tony, can tell you, screaming about a number of things. And I discussed things with Drew, who is Mr. Wonderful in my book. It needs, and so I am hoping for the next Christmas in Little Washington, work with Joe to have more town participation so that it is actually in the village of Little Washington. My criticism way out when I found out it was mainly going to be on Avon Hall was we would have a bifurcated parade and that's what we had. And the people who were involved just did a wonderful, I told Tony, it was a charming parade. But the mass of people up on Avon Hall was unbelievable. It was almost back to our old days, which sometimes I think our hype trend was our Mr. Mayor, 800 people. Avon Hall can't do that, nor can Santa. So I am hoping next year that we will make it more of a village event. But again, I salute the people who made it happen. And it did happen and the pictures are lovely and it was a charming parade. And I did in fact get a lot of complaints, but they weren't fair. I mean, they're like, where are the lumps? Where were the boats? But, so congratulations and next year, Joe, I'm putting the heat on you.
Noted.
Thank you.
Fortunately, he just red-lips.
Good evening, I'm Ruth Welch, I don't live in a town, but I'm active in a lot of things going on in the town. And thank you for the approval of the Food Pantry. I am vice president of the Food Pantry for the last four years. But I did want to say, thank you for the parade. And I did, my husband drove the float, the St. Gears float, and I was his, what, navigator, I guess you'd call it. And there was some, there was some concerns we had before the parade and I did send an email, or he did, and I helped him write it, to Tony and. So we were concerned when, before the parade, that the route was changed, so we, a few of us walked it and my husband went over there and he said, oh, I can do this, I'm a Navy pilot, I can, you know, get through anything. So, but on the day of the parade, there was throngs of kids and people not two feet from our, you know, five-ton unit, which is a dually plus a 40-foot trailer. So he was very concerned about the safety of those little kids jumping up and down two feet from that, from the parade route. So I was, he suggested we needed some sort of like three or four foot barrier so those little children would not cross or have a period where one of our little shepherds or angels would fall off to blow with the mishaps. So I'm hoping that you'll be able to fix it for next year. And I just want to say, it was a lovely parade and it was so great to see all the faces out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
Any other comments? All right, I will go ahead and oppose the public forum at this time. And I guess I will ask one thing if I could before we go on. Do you all have a need for people to provide feedback for the Christmas parade?
Well, yes, by email or I'll, we'll be happy to meet with anybody, because we do have a meeting of the committee, January 18th, to go over what worked and what didn't work. So for example, those issues and some other things that bubbled up, as you can imagine.
I will also say that the soon-to-be passed mayor and the future mayor have talked about having someone designated from the council on the parade committee.
And maybe we could do not a survey, but something, or put an email address, a little blurb in the paper, then could probably stick something in the paper where anybody who wanted to send feedback, you could just have a specific email address that we could follow this.
We do have CILW Parade and CILW Artisans at both at gmail.com and our personal, both our personal emails are available to anybody who wants to.
I was just saying, maybe then we could put something in the paper so you could get some feedback before the meeting.
And we've reached that to both the artisans and the vendors and the parade participants specifically.
Judy.
This is not a committee in perpetuity. What has happened in the past, but not because of COVID, is that the mayor calls, they can put people together, they put together the Christmas in Little Washington Parade. And there are some fantastic people and they may be the same people. So it is not, there are lots of things to learn. The biggest thing.